It being six o'clock, I call the August 2021 Planning Board Meeting to order. For a roll call, looks like we are all present. We are a Board of Six at the moment. Item number two on our agenda is adjustments. Are there any adjustments to the agenda needed? Hearing none, we will move on to item number three, approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes needed? If not, I can entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion to approve Board Member Powers.
Second.
Second Board Member Lipscomb. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries. The next item on our agenda this evening is 5A, 2021-96-0A Downtown Proposed Parking Ordinance Amendment, and we'll now hear from staff.
Good evening. I've been encouraged to talk slowly since there's only item on your agenda tonight other than the minute. However, I said that oftentimes means folks have one foot ready to go, so here we go. So for background on this item, which is all important, the Clayton Town Council held a special work session about a month ago, July 21st, to discuss downtown parking requirements. In addition to the full council and members of staff, there were probably additional 20, 25 citizens in attendance as well. Staff did a presentation upfront about different facts pertaining to our, the town's downtown parking requirements, how they had changed recently back in February when the Section 160D state mandated changes to the ordinance were adopted. There were also suggestions from the audience about different ways of approaching the changes. After some discussion by the council, I think the mayor first said that he would appoint a citizens committee to look at different aspects, some of the finer points of possible changes to the downtown parking requirements. But in the meantime, council gave the staff direction to proceed immediately with Unified Development Code text amendment, UDC, UCD, okay? So we did so, and we took to council a few weeks back to set a public hearing for September 7th. They can overlap some of the review process if they're urgently wanting to get the text amendment in front of themselves for possible adoption. And that's what they did. So they're processing an agenda item for the 7th for a public hearing on the text amendment. And therefore, we're in front of you this evening to allow you to make a recommendation on the matter. As noted, the change is simply to allow in the downtown overlay district for non-residential development, the normal off-street parking requirements to be reduced by 50%. And that's the only part of the change. The council was pretty adamant that they didn't want to change the residential requirement, felt like wanted to help protect future residents in downtown. But more importantly, they noted that the mayor had agreed to appoint a citizen committee to study it further and look at a wide variety of possible changes to the ordinance. The mayor indicated at a recent meeting that he intended to have that committee appointed so they could have their first meeting in September. So that's presumably upcoming pretty soon. So there's really very little content other than the 50% reduction, and I'm happy to respond to any questions. Jeff Keynes is here as well, knows the ordinance well on these banners.
Why would the, if they're gonna have a committee that's gonna study this and everything, why would they move forward with a recommendation prior to that committee, subcommittee, or whatever it is that are working, to come up with all of the plans at the same time?
I guess all I can say is that there seemed to be a strong consensus on the council that the current standard was more than was necessary in downtown, and they felt comfortable going ahead on the front end and making that reduction. There's some history to downtown parking requirements. There was a provision that the planning director can reduce parking requirements, and then that was taken out in February and replaced by, someone can go to the Board of Adjustment for a variance to reduce the parking requirement. And they wanted to go ahead on this in addition to where they are. And they also recognized, I think, particularly with so many citizens interested in participating on that committee, I think they had 30 signed up at the time of the work session, that that's likely to take a while to work through different options, presumably likely checking on other jurisdictions, what they're doing, other approaches. I know there's some complicated topics like payment in lieu of that's being done by a number of places. So I think the perception is that the more detailed study is gonna take a while, and that they had a consensus. I'm not sure they worked out ahead of time. Citizens were making comments, then they started discussing it, and then someone just said, why don't we reduce it 50% as soon as possible, and then let the committee bring in more finer-grain kinds of changes?
I wasn't at that special meeting, but was that the consensus of the attendees that this, that this where this come from? That was asked by the citizens that were there?
Councilmember Granis is here, but my perception at the meeting was that a lot of head nodding in terms of giving staff this direction on processing this front-end change to the requirements.
I did a lot of research today because I was out of town whenever they had the meeting back in July, and I'm very supportive of what the council's trying to do as a stop-gap measure. If it wasn't a stop-gap measure, I would be having a whole lot more conversation tonight, and I wouldn't be supporting it because I don't think it goes far enough because we have so many unique situations in downtown. So like, if you had Beddingfield, an old Beddingfield location where jacklins just moved out, we've got a new use just moving in, and correct me if I say anything wrong, Dick, but I believe that that is a retail, retail change, and it was done immediately. So there was no, they'd have to go back and apply rules. But if that would have set vacant for six months, I believe, even if a retail use came in after six months, wouldn't they have to comply with the parking provisions?
So some difference, if it's a conforming use permitted by the zoning district, then going from retail to retail is not a change in use typically?
Even if it sits for, I thought of it as unoccupied, and I'm not...
If it's unoccupied and it's non-conforming, then it may not be allowed to be reestablished. We have one situation like that we're working with downtown right now.
Yes, so I think anything we can do to help, because right now, everything's, it's kind of killed everything in downtown Clayton because, you know, Clayton has been in a development pattern for 171 years, you know, since 1850. And, you know, some of those lots and some of those buildings are over 100 years old, and they can't comply with the ordinance as it is right now. So I'm very supportive of additional changes and looking at this and being proactive and trying to figure out a way to be fair to everyone because, you know, to sit there and to say, you know, new user come in or new developer comes in wants to build a new building, which I believe would be good for downtown, but then to say you've got to, you know, have the same parking requirement that Walmart has on Highway 70 in a greenfield 50-acre development, and then, oh yeah, but the people across the street from you, that lot, they're building, covers the entire lot, they get to use your parking for free, you know? And you have to pay somebody to come out here and to monitor, to make sure that they, you know what I mean? That it just, there's not a good solution. And I believe that there is a solution, but there's gonna have to be a lot of education done on that. And one thing that I see, and I know I'm in a unique position because I've been downtown Clayton most of my life, and every day for the last 21 years at my office, is that some of the businesses that do not have parking have been using other people's parking for so long they think they're entitled to it. And they're not coming up here, and they're not talking to council members, they're not talking to the mayor because they don't realize, you know, that they're part of the problem really, you know what I mean? And this does affect them and everybody. But I've never been an advocate for putting up signs saying this parking's for me only. You know, I've always wanted to have, you know, a free, you know, like kind of one love everybody, and treat everybody with respect, and, you know, use parking reasonably, and, you know, let everybody use it, you rotate in, you rotate out, and it's good for everybody. And I hope that's where we can stay. But if, if we don't get to that level and have those conversations and educate the people, and I feel like that's what's going to happen, is that we're gonna see a whole lot more parking, no parking signs going up. And we're also going to stifle potential growth in downtown that I think this board and the council and the citizens in general, you know, want to see with more opportunities for not only residential opportunities in downtown, which I think should be part, but also other retail and hopefully restaurant and social opportunities in the downtown area. So that's me. So I support what we're doing as a stop-gap measure, and I hope everyone else does too. And hopefully, we'll get a good turnout from the mayor's select committee, and we can make some stuff happen.
Let's see, I had a couple questions and comments of my own as well. I echo that everything that Mr. Lipscomb said, so thank you for those. I just, when I got the amendment, I was curious where the 50% came from. And I think the reason being, just to echo Mr. Lipscomb here, it really not going far enough because I was just kind of looking at recent businesses that I've seen advertised on even our town websites and that sort of thing. And I just wanted to name a couple of them for people who might be listening or here, just to kind of connect. But for example, these businesses wouldn't even meet the 50%. So we have Revival, Mannings, Three Little Birds, Sherry's Cheesecake, Boulevard, Yellow House, Nancy Jo's, and Epic Axe, just to take a sampling, and that's just the tip of the iceberg.
That they wouldn't meet the 50% requirement?
Correct.
On site?
Also Crawford's.
So many, Crawford's, yeah.
Nothing that I know of in decades would be to meet even a 50% requirement.
Yeah, and I wanted to point that out just for those of us who are new or haven't really even had to delve this deeply into parking before to kind of think about those businesses. So, correct me if I'm wrong, so what would happen? They would attempt to get the 50%, and they wouldn't be able to meet that, and then they would move on to Board of Adjustment for a variance. And so...
There are, there are some other provisions in the parking ordinance. You can, like, you can do shared parking study. I mean, that's not every location, but if you're near a church, for example, as frequent, and you can also seek to, particularly if you're near a public parking lot, try and take credit for that if you're close by. There's also off-site parking. You can arrange another location within reasonable walking distance. So, yeah, you're pretty much right. There are a few other options that could be looked at, but they wouldn't necessarily change the whole situation.
Okay. So I'm thinking of just that handful of businesses, and as you said, there are probably many more that, that even with using these alternate options would probably not get 50%. I'm just thinking based on their capacities and square footages. It would still be pretty much several people that would end up having to potentially go to Board of Adjustment, several business, you know, for that purpose. And then I guess I just wanted to add my thoughts on that to see what the board thinks because to me, that's, once they would go to Board of Adjustment, not only are we adding kind of obstacles just to getting that business in there for something that they really can't change very easily. Then at that point, when they have to seek a variance, they have to prove a hardship pretty much to get that variance approved. They have to show that there's been some kind of hardship associated with that lot.
That's a great point. I mean, that is wonderful. Because then, you know, if the Board of Adjustment stood a position, are they there to, to design a site? Are they there to design a building? You know, if the applicant has to, if the applicant has to have a certain-sized building to make his numbers work, to make it financially feasible, and the Board of Adjustment says, well, if you make the building a third in the size, you can put in five more parking spaces, you know what I mean? Is that what we're really asking them to do? So that is a very good and valid point that, you know, where does that board, you know, consider hardship to be, you know, because there's so many different ways of looking at it?
Yeah, and I, and I just look at how many, because we're talking the downtown overlay here, which I was hoping, you don't happen to have a...
Ma'am?
To show the downtown overlay. Okay, that's okay. Yeah, that's fine. I just, especially we have a new member on our board, and we have some new applicants I'm hoping are watching tonight, just may not even be familiar with what the overlay looks like. When I looked at it, it's, it's a lot of the businesses in the overlay are going to have a really hard time even meeting 50%, as James said. And I guess as I was reading it over, the proposed ordinance, on the one hand, I definitely want a stop-gap measure, and I don't want to send anyone in the downtown overlay through the Board of Adjustment process, the variance process needlessly. However, I was a little hesitant to vote for something that I felt kind of was so short of really what made sense to me practically for downtown. And I just, so I wanted to voice all of those, those to the fellow board members and you all for further comments or questions you might have.
That's a great point. And I don't know, besides just having a lot of discussion in, you know, public input, you know, how do we, how do we get past that? Because what I understand from 160D is the reason why everything, things changed is because 160D took the ability for the planning director to give a waiver away from every community in the state of North Carolina. So it didn't say that you now have to have 10 parking spaces for every hundred square foot. It just simply took away the waiver option. So that, that's gonna be interesting to see, you know, how we can overcome that and what the legal minds say.
To that end, and I don't want to hog the microphone here at all, but I'm really happy to hear James's point of view as well. Were any other percentages considered, or was the 50% was that? And I know we're in an awkward phase with all this. We're waiting for a committee and all that, but I'm just curious.
My impression, and as I mentioned, Councilmember Granis was in the middle of it, I was an observer, but was that there was a feeling at first with all the people in the room and a lot of different viewpoints, that nothing was gonna happen in the short term. And so someone just threw out the idea about, why not do something as a stop-gap so that everything didn't have to go to the Board of Adjustment for a variance? And that sort of, all of a sudden, they were head nodding, and 50% came out of that. But I don't think there was a lot of discussion or analysis going on along with it. I think folks were relieved about the idea of doing something in the short term, and absolutely agree with Commissioner Lipscomb that it's a stop-gap measure there.
Thank you so much. And so I'm just thinking out loud for the record. So if we approved tonight the 50%, and my support would go toward that simply for the fact of thinking of other businesses in the queue right now trying to get into downtown, not wanting to lose them to other towns, especially over an ordinance that's kind of really not functioning properly at the moment, you know, but also, it's just so vague, this kind of committee and this timeline for making it something that, you know, I'm even thinking in my head, wow, couldn't we use a little bit of staff time to, to really just go through the overlay? And how many, what percentage of the businesses in the overlay would actually even be helped by the 50%? I don't know. I'm just talking out loud. Fellow board members, feel free to chime in. It's, it's definitely 50% is an improvement. I support that in terms of getting people through the process who, who might be helped by that right now. I guess I'm just thinking long-term, we're voting on something that I don't see as solving the problem. That's maybe what I'm getting at. Yeah.
I'll say at one point, we were asked to do brief survey of some of the Wake County communities of similar size, and, and they seemed to fall into two camps. Those that had recently added a parking garage, like Holly Springs, and I think Apex, and then those that hadn't yet but were trying to position themselves to be able to do that. I think Knightdale has a, some public land downtown where they thought if they co-sponsored with a private developer, they could get a garage and so on. I worked in downtown Durham and Greensboro for many years, and they had parking decks since the 60s. So it's a real game changer if there's a major expansion in public parking available. Immediately, all those communities will drop entirely their parking, off-street parking requirement, or reduce it way, way down. Sometimes they do treat residential a little bit different just for concern of the residents. But, yeah, there's a wide variety of requirements on this around.
Would the, would the current, would the current ordinance prevent the businesses that's hoping, oh, it's gonna open in the Barbara Building, would they have to go, with the current ordinance, would they have to go to the Board of Adjustment to be able to have, be able to operate in Clayton?
Well, of course, if you're an existing business and existing building, you're grandfathered, and even if you don't, you're a legal, unconforming use, and you'd be allowed to continue to operate with whatever parking you had. It's when you begin to expand either the use or the size of the building that the newer parking, the current parking requirements would kick in. And for example, with Crawford, they were adding a small patio area, but they were intensifying the uses within the building for restaurants. And that was definitely weighed at the, at the Board of Adjustment variance hearing in that case. Yeah, every building is really, can be pretty different. Except you could have a complete turnover in the nature of the retail, but if the use didn't change, you know, it wouldn't necessarily kick in extra parking requirements if you're not expanding the building. But I think the most complicated aspect of looking in more detail at other changes to the parking requirements is the issue of whether the town wants to get further involved in provision of public parking in downtown in one way or another. And that would usually give a different perspective on what the need is in the future and so on.
Thank you.
Sure. They, they have discussed public parking downtown several times at council. And in your opinion, is, is that a possibility here in Clayton, from, from what you heard?
Certainly always a possibility, and the new parking lot behind this building is largest expansion in publicly provided parking, I think, in the town's history. But inevitably, and we've read parking studies from downtown Fuquay and other places, and what they ultimately identify is that a town has to be willing to spend more money in one manner or another in order to expand the amount of public parking they control, be it extra dirt lots, or paved lots, or scattered, or big ones, or ultimately a parking deck. And that's usually a slow discussion. Want lots of input, usually over several years, to reach that point. And it's also a matter of chicken or an egg. If you have a couple of medium or larger projects that show up in downtown, all of a sudden, the availability of parking looks very different in a hurry. If there's, if it's more smaller infill projects going on, then they can usually tolerate and absorb more with the existing parking in the, in the area.
I have a question. I have a, and I appreciate you bringing the onus up about public parking because I was already thinking, if the onus is not on the business owners, it's going to revert to the town. And if you revert it to the town, it becomes very complicated, as you stated, with public parking. And eventually, there's not enough land downtown to go out. So you only have one choice, is to go up, as you stated, parking decks. And then when you put public parking as downtown grows, if the, if the committee doesn't understand it coming from communities that has had this issue, the first...
Like you could have a complete turnover in the nature of the retail, but if the use didn't change, you know, it wouldn't necessarily kick in extra parking requirements if you're not expanding the building. But I think the most complicated aspect of looking in more detail at, at other changes to the parking requirements is the issue of whether the town wants to get further involved in provision of public parking in downtown in one way or another, and that would usually give a different perspective on what the need is in the future and so on.
Thank you.
Sure. They, they have discussed public parking downtown several times at council, and in your opinion, is, is that a possibility here in Clayton? From, from what you heard?
Right. It's certainly always a possibility, and the new parking lot behind this building is largest expansion in publicly provided parking, I think in the town's history. But inevitably, and we've read parking studies from downtown Fuquay and other places, and what they ultimately identify is that a town has to be willing to spend more money in one manner or another in order to expand the amount of public parking they control, be it extra dirt lots or paved lots or scattered or big ones, or ultimately a parking deck. And that's usually a slow discussion, want lots of input, usually over several years to reach that point, and it's also a matter of chicken or an egg. If you have a couple of medium or larger projects that show up in downtown, all of a sudden, the availability of parking looks very different in a hurry. If there's, if it's more smaller infill projects going on, then they can usually tolerate and absorb more with the existing parking in the, in the area.
I have a question. I have a, and I appreciate you bringing the onus up about public parking, because I was already thinking, if the onus is not on the business owners, it's going to revert to the town. And if you revert it to the town, it becomes very complicated, as you stated, with public parking, and eventually, there's not enough land downtown to go out, so you only have one choice, is to go up, as you stated, parking decks. And then when you put public parking as downtown grows, if the, if the committee doesn't understand it, coming from communities that has had this issue, the first issue if the town takes it on is immediately some type of parking fund to generate revenue for the upkeep and the management of the lots or the decks. And then what you'll find, if businesses grow downtown, you'll have this dichotomy between the workers who are taking up the parking spaces and the customers who will need them. So that will be a conflict. If you live in any community with that issue, you know, there, there will be a conflict between workers taking up the parking spaces, which means now you got to hire, the town has to hire some type of parking enforcement to increase turnover in the spaces. It's a very complicated issue. So it's not just saying that the business owners, we don't want them to take on the onus, but you just can't give it to the town. There are a lot of decisions to be made, how do we manage this? Is the public parking for the, for the business owners and the workers, is it for the customers? That is, I'm telling you, that's going to be a dynamic question on the onset, you have to look at that. So it's a complicated issue. So I, I will support the stop-gap measure, but I believe we, we cannot just take 100% of the, let the town take 100% of the responsibility now without having some further study consultants coming in, and it could get very expensive very quickly, if you understand all the dynamics of the issue.
That's a really great point, and actually, what I was just doing a little bit of research before this meeting, looking for more of like a halfway solution, something where business, government, partner, I don't know, there's fee-in- lieu systems out there, I mean, everything I'm sure has its own pros and cons, but I, I like the way you worded that. Thank you. Any other comments at this time from the board?
Jeff put up the downtown overlay map there.
Thank you so much. It is actually shorter than I thought. It doesn't extend even down to, was that O'Neill Street? Yeah, just passed there a little bit, okay. Robertson, just down to Robertson.
Cross Robertson, yeah.
Yeah, I would have thought it extended further, interesting.
That's always subject to modification. Typically, downtown overlays end where the residential begins, so it's a little going on expanding it, but sometimes you get other property owners that want to get, want to get in on it.
The start of that expanding was going across the railroad track.
Yeah.
Which was done.
Any other comments from the board? If not, I can entertain a motion to either recommend or not recommend 2021-96-0A Downtown Proposed Parking and Ordinance Amendment to the Town Council.
Madam Chair, I recommend that we support the recommendation.
Thank you. We have a motion to recommend from Board Member Moore. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Board Member Powers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The next item on the agenda this evening is informal discussion and public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak at this time? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Subtle?
Motion made by Board Member Lipscomb. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Coats. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.